Good evening, everyone. It is 5:00 PM and I would like to welcome everybody to this December 4th Brevard County Board of County Commissioners meeting. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I would just ask that you bow your heads and take a moment of silence. Commissioner Tabia?
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Aye.
I make the pledge to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move right along on the agenda to item D. I need an approval of the minutes for the November 13th and November 20th meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item E, Mr. Smith, Commissioner Smith?
Chris Gallagher, you want to come up to the podium for me? I'll read this resolution and then we'll give you a few minutes to tell us about your, the whole, whatever you want to say.
All right, thank you.
Whereas, Vieira High School will host their Athletic Hall of Fame induction ceremony on Saturday, December 8th, 2018, and as a result of their outstanding individual accomplishments, the following athletes have been selected for enshrinement as members of the VHS Athletic Hall of Fame. And whereas, three-time Class 3A state champion diver Sarah Rousseau won the state 1M diving title in 2015, 2016, 2017, along with regional, district, and CCC titles four consecutive years. She attends the University of Missouri where she is a diver for the women's diving team. And whereas, two-time girls tennis Class 3A doubles state champions Sasha Belaia and Izzy Diaz earned two state titles in Class 3A in 2016 and 2017. This dynamic duo was undefeated in doubles play during their playing career together. That's a pretty awesome feat. Sasha attends the University of Illinois and is playing tennis for the nationally-ranked University of Illinois, and Izzy attends Eastern Florida State College and also plays women's tennis there. And whereas, two-time former Florida Today Bowler of the Year Greg Young bowled a score of 300 multiple times and won two national championships at McKendry University and currently is a professional bowler for Brunswick. And whereas, David McKay played baseball for Vieira from 2009 to 2013 where he holds records for season strikeouts, 91, strikeouts in a game, innings pitched in a season, doubles in a season, and also holds the record for career games played at the varsity level, which was 107. David went on to pitch at Florida Atlantic University and was drafted by the New York Mets in 2013 and Kansas City Royals in 2016. He currently plays for the AA Arkansas Travelers, which is a Seattle Mariners farm club. Whereas, former girls soccer coach Courtney Lundey coached the Vieira girls soccer program for five years and the success was unprecedented. Coach Lundey was instrumental in building a consistently winning team, earning two Class 4A state championships in 2015 and 2016, in addition to winter season national champions in 2016. She garnered Florida Dairy Farmers Class 4A Coach of the Year honors two times, as well as the NFHS Coach of the Year. Whereas, 2014 and 2015 Class 4A girls soccer state championship team earned the Class 4A state title defeating, how do you pronounce that, Navar?
Navar.
Navar, in the semifinals 2-0 and Pembroke Pines Charter 4-0 in an impressive state finals victory. Whereas, the Vieira Company is responsible for the community vision of Vieira and the land that Vieira High School resides. The community of Vieira is an embodiment of a longstanding vision of the Duda family demonstrating the quality of a new type of development. Duda was founded in 1926 farming celery. In the early '40s, a 43,000-acre tract of land was purchased in Brevard County. In 1989, the master plan for Vieira was announced and has been growing ever since. Today, the Vieira Company is one of the top 25 master plan communities in the entire United States. Therefore, be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners does hereby congratulate and commend the 2018 Vieira High School Hall of Fame inductees for outstanding examples they have set for the student athletes of today. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this fourth day of December, 2018. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to accept this proclamation.
A second?
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for the support, recognition, and of the Hall of Fame Awards Night that's going to be taking place this Saturday, December 8th, at Vieira High School's auditorium. From 6:00 to 8:00 PM, it's our second Hall of Fame. We inducted seven individuals, a community sponsor last year, and this year we continue with seven again, including the Vieira Company and those six other very recognized at the state level, national level, programs, individuals, student athletes that were very, very special, not only in their high school career, but some of them are continuing today to grow and mature and show the ability to do great things, and they all lived right here. So we're very proud of them, we recognize them. They go up into our Hall of Fame in our gym lobby, and it's a very special event. We're still selling tickets. We'd love to see as many people there, especially from our community, Saturday night. Tickets are available at the Vieira High School front office. Thanks again for your support and recognition. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving right along. Item F, would anybody like anything pulled from the consent agenda?
I would. I'd like to pull F1 and item F16 as well, please.
And let me just make sure, I don't believe, Sally puts these in such nice order, I don't have any Fs here, so there's nothing in here.
Maybe in one of the paperclips? Yes, ma'am.
It's possible it got... Was there multiple items on the card? I don't see an F.
First meeting. First meeting, this chair.
That's okay. F19? So it's just, it's coming, that's why we didn't have it. Okay. All right. No, I mean, we didn't have the card, so we didn't miss on purpose.
I was telling you I filled it out.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
So I can go ahead now?
No, not yet. We have to, we have to...
I think I have to, don't, y'all want me to talk? Normally, y'all make, since we talk first...
But normally, we approve what's left on the consent first, and then we address each item in order, so the item set...
Madam Chair, can I make it easier? I'll pull that item, that one item.
Oh, no, that's okay, but still, we usually go in order. I mean, unless I'm missing something, and we still need a consent, a motion for consent for...
I make a motion to approve all the items 1, 16, and 19.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett to approve the consent agenda minus items F1, F16, and F19, and seconded by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, so F1? Commissioner Lober?
Certainly. Can everyone hear me? Okay, excellent. I've taken the stance that I've been, I'm going to be watching, and I've been watching the dollars and the cents with respect to all of the county expenditures, and this is one, I think, that's certainly well-intentioned. I do see that there is some matching funding involved in it as well, but the concerns that I have, having done some due diligence with respect to this, including having had a briefing with the department head from which this project originated, or at least this proposal originated, I don't know that I can support this in the sense that I believe the money certainly should still go to the lagoon, but I don't believe that this is the most efficient use of the funds for the lagoon. It seems to be something more akin to trial and error, using something along the lines of an unproven technology. So I have no problem spending the same amount of money for a lagoon-related purpose, but I don't believe that this particular purpose is the best use of those funds. I would also ask that we set up at some point with this department, a workshop in April to address the lagoon, hopefully an all-day workshop. I do believe that earlier in the year, there were already two months that have been taken up by workshops, so I believe April is one of the first months where that might be a possibility. But at this juncture, I'm going to be voting against it, and I would ask folks to vote against it, at least until we have more information.
Commissioner Pritchett?
May I ask Virginia a question?
Sure.
This item, is this something that was recommended by the Indian River Lagoon Board?
No, this is an item that we have a state grant for. It is a denitrification project. You know, we've been working on a number of different denitrification project designs. They are fairly innovative designs, and so this is one of those. So the denitrification, the science of denitrification has been used in wastewater treatment technology for decades. The transfer of that science and technology to storm water is relatively new, and so we are testing different media types in our soils and our rainfall conditions. So that's... Did that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am. How much of this is coming from grant funds and how much are we doing a match on it?
Yes, there's definitely a match. I'm not sure whether this is a 50-50 or a 60-40 grant. I don't have that information with me. I couldn't provide that.
Okay.
Could I follow up briefly, Madam Chair?
Sure.
With respect to that, for almost exactly the same amount, and it's within a fraction if that, I have a proposal that I'm inclined to put on a subsequent agenda to implement nutrient monitoring stations in the Indian River Lagoon. And with respect to matching funds, those nutrient monitoring stations that normally start at $80,000 apiece have already been paid for by DEP, so we would only be responsible for the maintenance and the ongoing costs associated with keeping those functioning. And that's one of the items that I have in mind, where we could essentially take the money that would otherwise be going to this, apply the same amount of money to that, so it gives us a baseline for determining whether all of the projects that we have moving in a forward direction are actually benefiting the lagoon by reducing the nutrients, or if we're going the wrong way and they're being increased. So I'm not saying that this is a bad idea, I just have a problem funding something that seems to be so new that it's almost an unproven technology or seems to be a trial and error. Again, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I think the funds can be put to better use.
Ms. Parker, how confident are you in the technology?
There are different media types that work better under different conditions, and some of them take a little bit of time to equilibrate in the field, but once they equilibrate, there seems to be very good performance. That's why we're trying to move in this direction. Low maintenance, high performance, relatively low cost. This particular project has a higher cost associated with all the additional monitoring that we're doing to prove the extent to which it works. And I did just find the grant amount, which is $141,320. So we know the technology works, we don't know the efficiency that it works in our environment.
If I may. Now, my understanding, and I don't want to side rail it too long on this, but just to cut to the chase, my understanding with respect to how this technology works in a general sense is you have biological matter that's degrading, and it initially degrades, or at least early in the chain, to ammonia. The ammonia is removed, or as I should say, reduced or consumed by bacteria, which then convert that into nitrite, which then are consumed by other bacteria, which convert that to nitrate, which then are consumed down the line until you end up with nitrogen gas and other compounds, kind of like you would have in a reef fish tank filter or in a public aquarium. My concern, though, is the amount of money that we're spending on this, given the amount that is even anticipated of being removed in terms of the nitrogen at the end. Looking at the actual face of the sheet here, it says at least 488 pounds of nitrogen will be removed annually, and for the amount of money that we're talking about, I just don't know that in the scheme of the entire Indian River Lagoon, that that amounts to even a fraction of a fraction of a percent. So I'm not going to take up any more time on this particular item, but I think I've expressed the concerns as best I can.
Ms. Pritchett?
Ms. Parker, let me throw out a couple of questions here. Would the grant also be able to be used for the nitrogen monitoring stations? Commissioner Lober, just...
No, the grant is specific to this project. If we don't proceed with this project, we would...
We'll lose the grant.
Yeah, we're...
Let me ask you one more question. If we tabled this to the next meeting, is that going to hurt this right now? Will we lose the grant? Are we able to do that?
No, we would have time.
Because I think I might have gotten enough questions from Commissioner Lober that I might, would like a couple of weeks to investigate the thoughts he's throwing out for that, so...
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think Commissioner Pritchett brought up a good suggestion. I don't know if Commissioner Lober have a motion on the table, so...
I'm happy to move to table it for one term.
Till the 18th, and tell we can get a comparison from Virginia, Ms. Parker's department, letting us know which one has better efficacy for cleaning the lagoon, the same way that you have with the plan.
Is that sufficient time?
Oh, for me?
For you, yes. I apologize.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
As long as I know exactly what the questions are, right? So to get it on your next meeting, I need to turn in the agenda item in a matter, a day or two, so...
You could always get us that information.
But I can get you cost per pound.
Okay. What is the deadline for the grant proposal?
The board has already executed the grant. I don't have the delivery timeframe, but I'm sure it's, you know, a year or so out to complete the construction, so we can make up time.
So if you didn't make it at this next meeting, January also would be sufficient in order to meet it?
Yes.
So I change my motion to the soonest possible that is reasonable and gives Commissioner Lober the ability to make that determination.
Thank you very much.
I'll go on a second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Tabia to change the, or to table this item until everybody's gotten all the information that they need to vote confidently on it, and it's seconded by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Lober, F16?
All right, this one's going to be a lot quicker, I promise you. I just wanted to pull this, not to speak against it, I am in favor of it, but I did want to give, and I saw Jeff McKnight was there previously, is he still in the room? There you are, I'm sorry, sneaky. I was just hoping you might be able to apprise the commission as to the basis of this, as we previously discussed.
Certainly. This is a contract extension for AT&amp;T for network and telephone services. Right now, the services total about $30,000 a month, which has been greatly reduced since we awarded the contract to Bright House in 2016. The reason that we weren't expecting to bring this back again, we're expecting to be completed by this time, the reason we're bringing it back is because we've had significant delays with Bright House, who is now Spectrum. When we awarded this RFP to Bright House, they are a different company than we have now with Spectrum. We've had several discussions with Spectrum concerning these delays, and we have a meeting with Spectrum Legal on December 17th to discuss legal remedies to the delays.
Perfect. At this point, I'd move to approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Lober?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for the support, recognition, and of the Hall of Fame Awards Night that's going to be taking place this Saturday, December 8th, at Vieira High School's auditorium. From 6:00 to 8:00 PM, it's our second Hall of Fame. We inducted seven individuals, a community sponsor last year, and this year we continue with seven again, including the Vieira Company and those six other very recognized at the state level, national level, programs, individuals, student athletes that were very, very special, not only in their high school career, but some of them are continuing today to grow and mature and show the ability to do great things, and they all lived right here. So we're very proud of them, we recognize them. They go up into our Hall of Fame in our gym lobby, and it's a very special event. We're still selling tickets. We'd love to see as many people there, especially from our community, Saturday night. Tickets are available at the Vieira High School front office. Thanks again for your support and recognition. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving right along. Item F, would anybody like anything pulled from the consent agenda?
I would. I'd like to pull F1 and item F16 as well, please.
And let me just make sure, I don't believe, Sally puts these in such nice order, I don't have any Fs here, so there's nothing in here.
Maybe in one of the paperclips? Yes, ma'am.
It's possible it got... Was there multiple items on the card? I don't see an F.
First meeting. First meeting, this chair.
That's okay. F19? So it's just, it's coming, that's why we didn't have it. Okay. All right. No, I mean, we didn't have the card, so we didn't miss on purpose.
I was telling you I filled it out.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Thank you. No, not yet. We have to, we have to...
I think I have to, don't, y'all want me to talk? Normally, y'all make, since we talk first...
But normally, we approve what's left on the consent first, and then we address
each item in order, so the item set...
Madam Chair, can I make it easier? I'll pull that item, that one item.
Oh, no, that's okay, but still, we usually go in order. I mean, unless I'm missing something, and we still need a consent, a motion for consent for...
I make a motion to approve all the items 1, 16, and 19.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett to approve the consent agenda minus items F1, F16, and F19, and seconded by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for the support, recognition, and of the Hall of Fame Awards Night that's going to be taking place this Saturday, December 8th, at Vieira High School's auditorium. From 6:00 to 8:00 PM, it's our second Hall of Fame. We inducted seven individuals, a community sponsor last year, and this year we continue with seven again, including the Vieira Company and those six other very recognized at the state level, national level, programs, individuals, student athletes that were very, very special, not only in their high school career, but some of them are continuing today to grow and mature and show the ability to do great things, and they all lived right here. So we're very proud of them, we recognize them. They go up into our Hall of Fame in our gym lobby, and it's a very special event. We're still selling tickets. We'd love to see as many people there, especially from our community, Saturday night. Tickets are available at the Vieira High School front office. Thanks again for your support and recognition. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving right along. Item F, would anybody like anything pulled from the consent agenda?
I would. I'd like to pull F1 and item F16 as well, please.
And let me just make sure, I don't believe, Sally puts these in such nice order, I don't have any Fs here, so there's nothing in here.
Maybe in one of the paperclips? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
It's possible it got... Was there multiple items on the card? I don't see an F.
First meeting. First meeting, this chair.
That's okay. F19? So it's just, it's coming, that's why we didn't have it. Okay. All right. No, I mean, we didn't have the card, so we didn't miss on purpose.
I was telling you I filled it out.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Thank you. No, not yet. We have to, we have to...
I think I have to, don't, y'all want me to talk? Normally, y'all make, since we talk first...
But normally, we approve what's left on the consent first, and then we address
each item in order, so the item set...
Madam Chair, can I make it easier? I'll pull that item, that one item.
Oh, no, that's okay, but still, we usually go in order. I mean, unless I'm missing something, and we still need a consent, a motion for consent for...
I make a motion to approve all the items 1, 16, and 19.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett to approve the consent agenda minus items F1, F16, and F19, and seconded by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, so F1? Commissioner Lober?
Certainly. Can everyone hear me? Okay, excellent. I've taken the stance that I'm going to be, I'm going to be watching, and I've been watching the dollars and the cents with respect to all of the county expenditures, and this is one, I think, that's certainly well-intentioned. I do see that there is some matching funding involved in it as well, but the concerns that I have, having done some due diligence with respect to this, including having had a briefing with the department head from which this project originated, or at least this proposal originated, I don't know that I can support this in the sense that I believe the money certainly should still go to the lagoon, but I don't believe that this is the most efficient use of the funds for the lagoon. It seems to be something more akin to trial and error, using something along the lines of an unproven technology. So I have no problem spending the same amount of money for a lagoon-related purpose, but I don't believe that this particular purpose is the best use of those funds. I would also ask that we set up at some point with this department, a workshop in April to address the lagoon, hopefully an all-day workshop. I do believe that earlier in the year, there were already two months that have been taken up by workshops, so I believe April is one of the first months where that might be a possibility. But at this juncture, I'm going to be voting against it, and I would ask folks to vote against it, at least until we have more information.
Commissioner Pritchett?
May I ask Virginia a question?
Sure.
This item, is this something that was recommended by the Indian River Lagoon Board?
No, this is an item that we have a state grant for. It is a denitrification project. You know, we've been working on a number of different denitrification project designs. They are fairly innovative designs, and so this is one of those. So the denitrification, the science of denitrification has been used in wastewater treatment technology for decades. The transfer of that science and technology to stormwater is relatively new, and so we are testing different media types in our soils and our rainfall conditions. So that's... Did that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am. How much of this is coming from grant funds, and how much are we doing a match on it?
Yes, there's definitely a match. I'm not sure whether this is a 50-50 or a 60-40 grant. I don't have that information with me. I couldn't provide that.
Okay.
Could I follow up briefly, Madam Chair?
Sure.
With respect to that, for almost exactly the same amount, and it's within a fraction if that, I have a proposal that I'm inclined to put on a subsequent agenda to implement nutrient monitoring stations in the Indian River Lagoon. And with respect to matching funds, those nutrient monitoring stations that normally start at $80,000 apiece have already been paid for by DEP, so we would only be responsible for the maintenance and the ongoing costs associated with keeping those functioning. And that's one of the items that I have in mind, where we could essentially take the money that would otherwise be going to this, apply the same amount of money to that, so it gives us a baseline for determining whether all of the projects that we have moving in a forward direction are actually benefiting the lagoon by reducing the nutrients, or if we're going the wrong way and they're being increased. So I'm not saying that this is a bad idea, I just have a problem funding something that seems to be so new that it's almost an unproven technology, or seems to be a trial and error. Again, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I think the funds can be put to better use.
Ms. Parker, how confident are you in the technology?
There are different media types that work better under different conditions, and some of them take a little bit of time to equilibrate in the field, but once they equilibrate, there seems to be very good performance. That's why we're trying to move in this direction. Low maintenance, high performance, relatively low cost. This particular project has a higher cost associated with all the additional monitoring that we're doing to prove the extent to which it works. And I did just find the grant amount, which is $141,320. So we know the technology works, we don't know the efficiency that it works in our environment.
If I may. Now, my understanding, and I don't want to side rail it too long on this, but just to cut to the chase, my understanding with respect to how this technology works in a general sense is you have biological matter that's degrading, and it initially degrades, or at least early in the chain, to ammonia. The ammonia is removed, or as I should say, reduced or consumed by bacteria, which then convert that into nitrite, which then are consumed by other bacteria, which convert that to nitrate, which then are consumed down the line until you end up with nitrogen gas and other compounds, kind of like you would have in a reef fish tank filter or in a public aquarium. My concern, though, is the amount of money that we're spending on this, given the amount that is even anticipated of being removed in terms of the nitrogen at the end. Looking at the actual face of the sheet here, it says at least 488 pounds of nitrogen will be removed annually, and for the amount of money that we're talking about, I just don't know that in the scheme of the entire Indian River Lagoon, that that amounts to even a fraction of a fraction of a percent. So I'm not going to take up any more time on this particular item, but I think I've expressed the concerns as best I can.
Ms. Pritchett?
Ms. Parker, let me throw out a couple of questions here. Would the grant also be able to be used for the nitrogen monitoring stations? Commissioner Lober, just...
No, the grant is specific to this project. If we don't proceed with this project, we would...
We'll lose the grant.
Yeah, we're...
Let me ask you one more question. If we tabled this to the next meeting, is that going to hurt this right now? Will we lose the grant? Are we able to do that?
No, we would have time.
Because I think I might have gotten enough questions from Commissioner Lober that I might, would like a couple of weeks to investigate the thoughts he's throwing out for that, so...
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think Commissioner Pritchett brought up a good suggestion. I don't know if Commissioner Lober have a motion on the table, so...
I'm happy to move to table it for one term.
Till the 18th, and tell we can get a comparison from Virginia, Ms. Parker's department, letting us know which one has better efficacy for cleaning the lagoon, the same way that you have with the plan.
...by Commissioner Tavaia to change the, or to table this item until everybody's gotten all the information that they need to vote confidently on it. And it's seconded by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Loeb, F-16.
All right, this one's going to be a lot quicker, I promise you. I just wanted to pull this, not to speak against it, I am in favor of it, but I did want to give, and I saw Jeff McKnight was there previously, is he still in the room? There you are, I'm sorry, sneaky. I was just hoping you might be able to apprise the commission as to the basis of this, as we'd previously discussed.
Certainly. This is a contract extension for AT&amp;T for network and telephone services. Right now, the service is total about $30,000 a month, which has been greatly reduced since we awarded the contract to Bright House in 2016. The reason that we weren't expecting to bring this back again, we're expecting to be completed by this time, the reason we're bringing it back is because we've had significant delays with Bright House, who is now Spectrum. When we awarded this RFP to Bright House, they are a different company than we have now with Spectrum. We've had several discussions with Spectrum concerning these delays, and we have a meeting with Spectrum Legal on December 17th to discuss legal remedies to the delays.
Perfect. At this point, I'd move to approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item F-19. Ms. LaSalle. Yes.
Pam LaSalle-Viera, sorry for the confusion earlier. Normally, I don't get involved in the consent agenda. I would like to ask, there are 90 reappointments or appointments in this consent agenda for advisory boards. That item is up for discussion later in the meeting for term limits, and I would like to ask the board consider postponing these appointments and reappointments until the next meeting, and that would still be plenty of time to meet, filling the vacancies, which technically, of these 90 appointments and reappointments, only seven are new appointments.
But that's assuming that that item that you're bringing on the miscellaneous passes.
Yes, it is, but it's giving me the benefit of the doubt that it may pass, and then if there could not, see, I have no influence up there, so there could not be the consideration of only making the decision to go forward with appointments and not retroactive.
Maybe it's a question for Ms. Bentley. Not knowing exactly how this item will go, and I imagine we would probably need something to vote on, but maybe it's a question for commission on how they feel about pulling this item. I know part of the purpose of reappointing now is that people are prepared to start at the beginning of the year, so maybe getting an idea of where this board is at in regards to your request, because there's not a prepared something for us to vote on anyhow.
Yes, but historically, looking at the past years, it's often done, these major pushes for appointments and reappointments are done at the second meeting of the month, and I'm just asking that you consider holding off till next, but I don't, because I don't know how y'all are going to go with this, and so, anyway, that's all I'm asking for, thanks.
Pleasure, the board. Ms. Pritchett.
I still have, I have at least one gentleman in there that is a new appointment, he has a meeting in seven days, so I'm going to have to have him approved tonight so he can go to that meeting and serve on that board.
Can I speak? No? Nobody else? Nobody else has an opinion? Who? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Tavaia.
Thank you. Can we table it until, a little bit later in the meeting, until we discuss Ms. LaSalle's issue?
That was what I was going to ask Ms. Bentley about.
And...
The board could do that.
Okay, we'll move this item to after we hear your item, under miscellaneous. Ms. LaSalle, you're number one.
Pam LaSalle-Viera, this is kind of an unusual public comment. There aren't, unlike tonight, most nights, this room is empty, except for one or two citizens, and it's filled by staff normally, but tonight, we have a lot of people at this meeting. But there, we lost a member of the community this week that comes here often, and his name is Richard Charbonneau. You know, about three years ago, he was such a patriot and such a character, three years ago, he, there, in a January meeting, the board in board reports passed a resolution, I'm not sure of the technical name of it, where you cannot put CRAs, none of the board members could put CRAs on the agenda unless they approved of it before the meeting, and so, this was done during board reports, and we can't make comments after board reports. So, the next meeting, Richard came, and he stood here, because he felt that the citizens were being silenced by this action, and he stood here for three minutes of silence because he wanted it to represent what had been done. And I'd just like to say, he's going to be sorely missed. I'm sorry. He was a real patriot. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Lee Hathaway?
Thank you. I appreciate the time, thank you commissioners for letting me speak today. My, my situation that I wanted to talk to you about is term limits for everyone. That's my bag, I'm very passionate about this, and again, I got to say, term limits for everyone, no matter what you do for the county, in your business plans, in your organizational charts, I would say you have to have some kind of a timetable for everybody that does something for the county. I think the status quo is no longer, no longer valid, and I've got to tell you a couple of instances that I had with term limits. Back in the 80s, I sent a letter to George McGovern in Maine, Senator Gridlock, and I made sure that they received the letter, and those days, we faxed things. We didn't, we didn't have any of these high-technology items. And I sent it to the lady in his office, and then I called, and I said, "Did you get my fax?" She said, "Yes," she said, "but I'm not going to give it to Senator Mitchell because you want term limits." Let's fast forward to October 18th, 2016, up at the great outdoors, when Bill Posey came up there to speak, and he said he would talk for a few minutes and then open it up for comments. Well, he talked so long, he only had a couple of minutes for us to comment, and I stood right up and I said, "Bill, it's time that you put in some kind of legislation for term limits." And he said, "No, we don't want that because we'll lose the brain trust." The brain trust? Think about that, in Washington, DC, the brain trust. Anyway, the status quo, we need new blood, we need to think outside the box, we need new people, and we need to have more accountability, and we need to follow the money. Again, I'm passionate about term limits, I think we need it because no one has a lock on handling our money until they want to quit. So, I thank you, I thank you for listening to me, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Mr. Tovey? I don't know if I said it before, but name and address for the record, please.
This is Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne.
We know that, but not everybody else does.
Going on my 10th year of public comments, thank you, and I try and implement my name and address with everything, and although it's not recognized for everybody, it's only instituted when I come up to speak, most times, not anything to do with you, excuse me. Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. I was speaking on my right to defend myself, and first, I'll show you some of my legal books that I bought.
Thank you.
In vain, because when I went to the court hearing, they would not allow me, they prejudize about my stuff, and would not allow me to carry anything in there, and somebody provided a pad and a pen I could use, and I put up a good defense against myself in court, and here I am now. Why am I up here now? Right to defend myself. Those books would have helped me out. When I went to court, the judge kept on asking me if I objected to things, and I did object and had no way to reference anything, I just told him I objected and gave him a long list of my objections. From two cars a day to 200 cars a day, I notified the sheriff's department, what did they do? They let the assailants even just do further destruction and more aggression towards me, and then threatened to arrest me and shoot me and bake rack me while, so I have nothing left. You can call me Barney Rubble and my pile of stuff at Roberts Road. This is the last incident on Thanksgiving weekend. I gave it to the chair with the seniority, or well, the commissioner with the seniority. My defense, code enforcement, I have overgrowth. The overgrowth stops my assailants from spraying my plants with weed killer, they also stop all the blinding lights from shining in my house from the hundreds of cars in the highway that's been installed, and the four-story building across the street where I have no privacy, and I'm looking out my window, and there's people waving and smiling and laughing at me while they try and drive me off my property and do all kinds of other things. Deexcavating of my property, guy takes his tractor and excavates everything, and then code enforcement comes along, gives me all these fines, I paid the fines, I complied every time. My trucks stopped the bullets when they were shooting at me, I call Sheriff Ivey, Sheriff Parker, now they, oh, strip me down and check my pockets, but let the people go that we've been doing the, yeah, and I have witnesses, and it's all documented, and I have videos, and I've been up here for, going on 10 years now, and I try and include my name and information every time, because I get reminded about the things that I'm not allowed to do, but everybody else can do what they want to. And I guess it was in vain that I wasted, things that go in vain. Usually, when I speak, it's not in vain, just because people don't understand what I'm saying doesn't mean it's in vain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey.
For the record, that's Tovey, T-O-V-E-Y.
That's what I said, Mr. Tovey.
Just saying for the record.
Okay, moving on to public hearings. Item H-1.
Item H-1 is a petition to vacate a portion of a utility easement. It's in Suntree Woods, which is Flatbook 40, page 15, it's in Melbourne. When the owners built their home, a portion of the roof eve went over the utility easement.
I say, can you speak in the mic?
Okay, is that better?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. When they constructed the home, a portion of the eve was over the easement, and so they wish to vacate just the portion where the eve is over it. We've investigated, we'll still be able to maintain the sewer line as installed, we've sent out our request for any negative impact, and we received none, so we recommend approval of the petition.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, do you have any issue with this item?
No, I'd like to make a motion to vote for this petition to vacate.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Loeb. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H-2.
Good evening, Commissioner. H-2 is a request for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct the second public hearing to approve revisions to Chapter 62, Article 6, zoning regulations to create tiny house planned unit development and permit, and amend the permitted use with conditions to add criteria for tiny houses and tiny houses on wheels to allow them as permanent residences. This ordinance, in the PUD, we create a, an ordinance that allows for the PUD size to be a minimum of a half acre to 10 acres in size, it allows for, or I should say, it requires 30% of that area to be considered open space, and that they have a 25-foot perimeter setback and buffer area. But it also provides and allows the developer to establish some minimum lot dimensions, widths, and lengths, and that is the, so that allows for kind of a development of tiny home solution. And then the, we also are amending the permitted with use conditions to allow them in the GU, the PA, the GURA, the GU, GUL, and the mobile home, RR MH1s, RR MH .25, RR MH5, and the TR3 zoning classifications. In this, we have, the conditions would include that they are on a lot that's greater than 2.5 acres, that they contain a minimum living square footage of 120 feet, up to the minimum standard zoning classification, so once you get over the minimum standard living area, that would be considered a regular house, and it would not fall under the tiny home provisions, and that they, that the tiny house would be the only permitted residence you'll use, allowed on the property, and the accessory structures would be limited to 600 square feet, and they would obtain their acknowledgement from adjacent property owners that they didn't have any issues with the tiny homes being built on those properties. It also would create a definition for tiny homes on wheels, so if you have any questions, we're happy to.
Commissioner Tavaia, is that a new light?
Yes, Madam Chair. I want to, I want to thank Mr. Cawkins and Ms. Bentley for their diligent work. This ordinance is going to offer new opportunities for potential homeowners, as well as manufacturers of tiny homes here in Brouard County. I see one minor change. I'd like to change Section 62, 1844, to delete the 2.5 acre requirement for lots that meet the current minimum area for their zoning class. Now, this would not impact the 2.5 requirement that is built into the GU, PA, AGR, AU, AUL, RR MH, 2.5, RR MH5, TR3, those would remain unchanged. This is the only, the only exception would be RR MH1, which is the rural residential mobile home. I believe that Commissioner Pritchett mentioned something about that in the north part of the county, and this would give those landowners the ability to go with that. All this would accomplish is to prevent codifying a limitation that is unnecessary and could make things more difficult to evolve as we move forward. So, to put a motion on the table, I'd like to adopt the ordinance with one change, that would be delete the requirement of 2.5 acres in Section 62, 18844, Section 1. All requirements inherent in the listing zoning classifications include minimum lot size will remain as proposed. Additionally, give staff the authority to make non-substantive changes consistent with the board's intent. Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tavaia. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, Mr. Cawkins, what are your thoughts regarding the proposed change by Commissioner Tavaia?
So, the proposed change is, it does only affect the one zoning classification, the other classifications that we have are larger than one acres, they were at 2.5 minimum. If you remember, the board, when the board discussed this, oh boy, back, I think, in October, there was, the question and the concern was to allow them on agricultural zoning classifications, and also include them into the, include them in the manufactured home zoning classifications, and then there was some discussion about what is considered agriculture, and there was, there was, at that point, it seemed that the direction was to have a 2.5, 2.5 acre limit, anything over 2.5 acres would be considered agriculture. So, this change basically just affects one zoning classification, so it is kind of minor from the standpoint that we're only allowing for the addition of that. It does bring more properties into the mix, it would allow for more properties to have those zoning, or that, the tiny homes, and it would also allow for more zoning changes to go, you know, because we're just talking about parcel size now, and where we have one acre lot, so it does have that, it would be being less restrictive, and it would really fall to what the, what the pleasure of the board is, but I, as far as I'm concerned, or my opinion, it is a rather minor change that is being proposed, and it would make it more, it would allow for more land to be utilized for tiny home development.
Commissioner Tavaia, since it is minor, what's, what's the background, what's the reasoning that you want to make the change?
Madam, may I respond?
Yes.
Thank you. And it's a very good question, one that I did not include, so that is, that is my fault. The purpose of tiny homes, amongst other things, is to get folks into affordable housing, and while tiny homes may be affordable, purchasing 2.5 or more acres may be not affordable to folks that are looking to size down, so providing a one acre, an option for a one acre lot at a lower price for land, this may make the option of affordable housing available to a lot more people that can purchase a one acre lot, again, instead of a 2.5 acre lot, and again, this is only in the rural residential mobile home area, so this will not be in, you know, our traditional residential areas, it's just to make it continually as affordable as possible to folks, so that's the rationale, and I apologize for not including that when I made the suggestion.
Madam Chair, I'll go with that, I'll second the motion.
A second by Commissioner Smith. Mr. Loeb?
You know, at this point, I think it's already been hashed out, that's fine.
Okay, and I'll just comment that, that's exactly, some of my concern was, was making it affordable, and the concern with having to buy such a large plot of land to do one of these, if the idea is affordable housing, we wanted to have, people to have that option, I think rural residential is a perfect solution, so.
See, no more discussion, I'll call a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H-2, which is related?
So, yeah, item H-3, this is, so now we talked about where the, where they could be located, and now we're looking at creating an ordinance that would regulate the construction of the tiny houses on wheels, so kind of the background here is that when you look at the tiny house on wheels, it doesn't really fall within any of our local regulations, and it doesn't fall under the building, the Florida Building Code, so we, we felt that it was necessary to create a separate construction standard that would regulate those, especially since the board was considering utilizing them as permanent residences, to ensure that we had all of the safety, the safety concerns addressed. So, what we looked at is the, the American National Standard Institute has an ANSI standard, it's 119, it's what regulates RV construction, so we mirrored that in this proposed ordinance, and that identifies some, it provides some standards for fire, safety equipment, for electrical plumbing and fuel gas systems, and it also has some reasonable standards for living areas, kitchens, bathrooms, lots, and that, and it provides some requirements for floors, walls, and roofs, and stairways. So, this ordinance, really, what we've, what we've done is we've created some permitting requirements, but most of all, we've, we've asked that we get a certification from a Florida registered professional engineer, certifying that the tiny house on wheels meets those ANSI standards, and then we would look at the, the connection to the sewer and to the electrical, and the tie-down from a Florida Building Code standpoint and the driveway from our local access standpoint, so if you have any questions, we're certainly happy to answer those.
I'd move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tavaia. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H-4, and I have one card on H-4.
Item H-4, this is a request that the board considers the approval of a second amendment for the developers agreement between Melbourne 95 New Haven LLC and the City of West Melbourne, and if you all approve this, we request that we announce that the second hearing will be held on December 18th, beginning at 9:00 AM. So, on January 29th, 2018, the Board of County Commissioners approved the original developers agreement with M95 and the City of West Melbourne. That agreement required that M95 construct some off-site improvements on 192 and Johns Roads Boulevard, and authorize the county to provide impact, transportation impact fee reimbursement for those improvements in the participating parties. That agreement expired on July 29th, 2018, and M95 is asking for a five-year extension that would allow them to recover the remainder of their expenses associated with that construction due to the delay of the moratorium. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Going to make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Smith, and I have Commissioner Loeb's light on.
Just wanted to ask briefly, this isn't in any way imposing any impact fees that aren't already in place, is it? That's, I don't read it to impose anything that's not already in existence.
No, sir, it does not impose any impact fees, it's just providing credit or reimbursement for the improvements of those that would be collected on certain properties, and it is also capped, it cannot, they cannot receive credit for any more impact fee than they would create.
Thank you, sir.
And I can speak to a little bit of the background, the long and short of it is, is that the Board of County Commissioners imposed a moratorium on impact fees, and this developer was not able to recoup those, and so, it was sort of an unforeseen circumstance where they're just trying to recoup the, the investment they made in the infrastructure, so it's a much longer discussion, and you can ask Mr. Denninghoff, we had that discussion in my office more than once, but I'm glad that this is finally getting resolved, and I appreciate the time that staff put on this to get this resolved in a fair and equitable manner. So, no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right.
So, item H-5, this is a request for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct the second public hearing to allow 265 and 267 East Merritt Island Causeway, Merritt Island seek economic development incentives through the Brownfield designation pursuant to Florida Statute 37680. This item came before you, at your last meeting, and if you will remember, that it was, basically, what we are doing is asking for you to designate this property so the applicant can seek their economic incentives for redeveloping the property. Ms. Long is here, she has a brief, I believe, a brief presentation for you all identifying that they've met the standards in the statute, and with that, I'm going to turn it over and let her address the board.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Amy Long, I'm here on behalf of SBJV Merritt LLC. Do you need my personal address?
Madam Chair, do we need your personal address?
Maybe just your city and state, because we have that, I believe.
I am from West Palm, Florida.
Okay.
Thank you. I didn't, not see that. So, I'll go ahead and get started.
I can say it's part of our public record, if you feel more comfortable.
Yeah, I'll go ahead. So, we are here...
That's not a problem, right, Ms. Bentley? Okay.
Yeah, we are here to designate those two properties that were just mentioned as a Brownfields area. This is a prerequisite so that we can enter into a Brownfield site rehabilitation agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. So, this, since this property has environmental impacts from petroleum products...
When he gets it out?
This will allow my client to receive tax credits, because it is a voluntary cleanup, he did not cause the contamination, and he's voluntarily cleaning up this property. So... So in order to get designated, we must show that we have met the five criteria. So those are the two properties, and this is in Merritt Island. That is the proposed conceptual redesign, restaurant use, commercial use, 3,500 square The definition of a brownfield area, there's both an EPA and FDEP. Basically, it's a real property, the expansion, redevelopment, or reuse of which may be complicated by actual or perceived contamination. In this case, we already know that there is actual contamination. The purpose of doing this designation, like I said, is to go into the brownfield site rehabilitation agreement. But there are also other bonuses, such as creating jobs, you can get money back for that, and loan guarantees. This is not a new process. There are over 450 in the state and 21 in Brevard County, but in other municipalities. So once they enter into the brownfield site rehabilitation agreement, like I said, the biggest thing is tax credits, but you also get liability protection. And so these are the five criteria that I mentioned. One is either owning or controlling the property. My client purchased the property December 2017. Criteria two is economic productivity. This project will create no less than five full-time equivalent jobs. Criteria three, consistent with local planning documents. We, it's commercial use, and that is the current zoning. We have gone through, we have submitted the plans, and we've gotten letters from you guys. Public hearing, public notice. We have done two public meetings, one of which was done today. The proof of public notices were submitted to the county. We had no people show up for either community meeting, but we did receive calls twice, both positive responses. And five is reasonable financial assurance, and we have provided bank letters and other letters to the county. And do you have any questions?
Commissioner Loeb?
I don't have any questions. I do have a comment. If someone else has a question of you, though, I'm happy to defer to them and then have my comment. Nope? Okay.
Thank you.
With, with respect to that, I just would ask my colleagues to support this, as it appears to help Merritt Island with absolutely no cost whatsoever to the county. So hopefully, everyone will join me in supporting this. And consequently, I'd move to approve it.
A second.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Please, I'm ready to do new business. Item J1.
No? Okay. We have a church down in the Barefoot Bay area that is immediately on the other side of the road from Mickle Road, and they desire to have water service. In order for us to provide water service, we have to expand the Barefoot Bay District to include that piece of property. So this agenda item is to advertise the amendment and legislative intent to change the ordinance to include the space that this church occupies. We would come back then in two weeks with a public hearing to consider the final drawing of the church's property and so forth.
Great. Commissioner Tavaia, it's your district.
Sounds good.
Is that a motion?
Make a motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Tavaia, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That was great. Item J2.
Good evening, the Commissioners. This item is addressing the Dock Air Airport Board Policy, BCC 79, which addresses the controlling documents and the rates and charges for the airport. The last time the, this document was updated was 2009. Recently, in May, there was an audit of the airport, which came up with recommendations on policies, procedures, and rates and things. And it, we got board direction to go ahead and update, in June or July, update the policy. And that's what we've done. It's been through with risk, with legal, and of course, with senior management and the, and the department multiple times. It also has gone out to the tenants at two times to get their comments, which we did receive comments back and incorporated what was applicable to the, to the document.
Commissioner Tavaia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to thank staff on their diligent work to bring this up. Mr. Borowski has shown great leadership in this transition. For the members who are not aware, this airport is certainly a shining star for Brevard County, one that does not take in tax dollars. Some of these lease amendments are essential to follow FAA guidelines that make things a lot more clear. That said, I do have one slight concern. My issue lies with some of the rate changes and recommendations. Namely, there is an increase in hangar rates over CPI, that of 10%. While I understand that it is an independent audit revealed that we were among the lowest rate in the state, I believe this makes us more attractive and will allow continued growth. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proposal for the aircraft storage hangars rates at the CPI, not the proposed 10%. That would be my motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett?
Mr. Tavaia, what's the difference in, in those two rates, or, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Depending on which CPI index you use, it could be, you know, six and a half, seven, 7%. Madam Chair, the, we're looking at hangar rates of around $250. So, you know, if you do, you know, 20, 20 bucks in that, in that neighborhood. But I, I don't think that we should put a fee increase of 10% on our, on our current leases. I think we should index it to the CPI the same way we've done everything else.
Okay, I, I'm, it's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I, I understand your, your thinking on that, because you are, you do like to do CPI. My only thought on this, gentlemen, is this is an enterprise. And so if, if we're going to make that decision, I'd kind of want to know your cost also, because this has to cover its own costs and be able to do the extra capital things you need to do. So this isn't like a typical ad valorem. So I think if we're going to make those decisions, and you told me yesterday you were doing a modest increase right now. And, and so these, these are the questions I'm going to, I'm going to want to have answered for that, but, so it, it could be different as far as rate increases to know what we're covering. Mr. Bate? I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I could, to answer the question that you asked, the difference between the CPI and the 10% would be, it's approximately, under CPI, it would be about $8,000. It would be $38,000 if the full 10% were granted.
So that could be significant as, as far as what costs are and what type of capital investments you make. So I, I don't know, sir, if that would be something I'd want to do the index on yourself.
The current rate is $263 a month for a standard hangar. This would take us up to $289 a month for, that includes tax.
Why did, is it okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Why did you make the decision to change the rates to these amounts?
We went up by 10% across the board.
Is there a, a cost reason of why you did the increases, or?
Yes, we did, we looked at, both the audit looked at eight close-around airports, and we looked at the whole state of Florida and what's close. And we are currently the lowest by, in more than 10%. So the CPI has not kept up over the, over the years in the airport. And you also have to understand that the airport has had vast expansion in the last 10 years. We've gone from when I was there, approximately 24 hangars. We now have 71 hangars that are in existence with 100% occupancy, and we're currently building another 20, 24 hangars right now. The, the, the support, the loan that we've got on the new hangars and the terminal that we're currently building is about $1.2 million. So the maintenance costs alone have gone up quite a bit with the expansion of, of the airport. 10 years ago, we were doing 17,000 to 20,000 operations a year. Today, we're doing 65,000 operations a year. So there's quite a bit of expansion in the airport. When we looked at that, again, we'd still remain the lowest hangar rates, not only in the county, but outside of the county. On the responses that I got back from the tenants, one of their response says, even with the increase in the rates, it's the best deal in town. And it is.
Does the general fund had to be given any supplements to the airport?
No, ma'am. The general fund has not given any supplements to the airport since I've been there 14 years. The airport has paid for all its match funds in addition to debt service through loans.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
When was the last time you had a rate increase?
2009, other than the CPI each year. And in 2009, we went up, I believe it was $12 a year for the first year. The next year after that, it might have been $10 to get it up to the fair market value. It was deemed fair market value at that time.
And even with this increase, as you say, we're still not comparing comparative to other.
That is correct.
Airports. So we're still, we're still bargaining.
Melbourne, Sebastian. Yes, sir, that is correct. Melbourne, Sebastian, Merritt Island, Arthur Dunn, get a higher price than we do.
And it is a free market. They're free to leave, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Commissioner Loeb?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, so if you could help me, I'd appreciate that. With respect to the impact, were this to be approved on the cost of aviation fuel, what would that be?
Say that again, I didn't understand the question.
If this were to be approved, I'm curious as to the impact on the cost for either, I don't know if you use jet fuel or 110 low lead.
Aviation fuel. We sell both, we sell both 100 octane low lead and Jet A. That's the standard fuels. The county policy is to mark it up 50 cents a gallon. So if we get the fuel at $4 a gallon, we sell it at 4.50. It's been that way since I've been at the airport. It's always been 50 cents.
So what would the change be, were this to be implemented?
The change for fuel is the same. 50 cents, although, it would be 50 cents. Sometimes what we do is, if Sebastian Airport is selling at $4.43, and we get the gas at, at $4, we may make it one or two cents off, just so that we remain competitive. Because people will fly, when they're getting fuel, they'll fly to that cheaper airport for a couple, a couple cents. But, but to answer your question, it is a 50 cents a gallon markup, which is the current county policy.
So if, if there's any change.
That's not going to change.
So it would be negligible or nonexistent as far as any change to that?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Tavaia?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Pritchett brought up an interesting argument, that there'll be a $30,000 should, should we go with the CPI versus the fee increase or, or the fee increase of 10%. In this, are there any new services in which you will derive new revenues that potentially could make up for that $30,000 loss that Mr. Bate mentioned?
If you look at the second page, it lists the new services that we have here. And the second page of Exhibit A, that's what you're looking at, except the page of Exhibit A. I doubt it would make up the 30, 38,000 approximately dollars. When you look at things like a crash removal, we only get one or two a year. That's $200. When you look at a sign for, someone wants to put up a sign on their commercial business there, it's $20 a month. The lock replacement is $50 now, whereas we didn't have that before. Camping, to have a, some of the other things here, camp, overnight camping is $25 a day. That happens, but it's not that often. It's not every single weekend that we have a camper there. It might be every other month. Tie-downs are basically gone up $10 if someone wants to purchase a set of tie-downs. And the only other difference here in the bottom under terminal space, since we'll have a terminal open hopefully this month, we have three conference rooms in there, and we'd rent the conference rooms out for $25, basically a half day if it's a small conference room, or $50 a half day if it's a large conference room. So there are those new services at the, at the airport, but I doubt it would make up the $30,000 a year.
Senator?
Yes, sir.
Assuming, let's assume Commissioner Tavaia's motion is favored, can you still run the operation the same as you have been? I mean, you just can't either expand or, I mean, when, when the rubber meets the road, how is, how is that going to affect operation if you have a CPI increase as opposed to the 10% that you're asking for?
The debt service is what I'm concerned about. Our debt service on the new, as I said, the two new buildings, the terminal and the, and the new set of hangars we're building right now, brings my total debt service up from somewhere in the vicinity of $60,000 a year to about $110,000 a year. And so that additional charge is going to help us in our debt service.
Help you, like?
Help you. If we don't have it, we're going to struggle.
I mean, are you not going to be able to pay it, or is it?
Oh, no, no, no. I, I doubt that, no.
Right.
We'd be able to pay it. We'd be able to pay it. The expenses, unforeseen expenses and existing expenses are growing. With a new terminal, for instance, I got my first electric bill, because we now have landing lights, and we will have a GPS approach this year that causes. I just got one, $300 for last month, which was unscheduled, but they were working on the lights. And then I got one for this month, $365. That's in addition to the standard, about nine different electric bills that I get. So that was a, that was an expense that wasn't put into the initially, when we looked at the terminal, that I have to cover.
And the reason why I ask is I question, if you just went 10% straight across the board, I don't know how, if that's necessarily fair assessment on, on who should be paying what in rent, if you're basing it, if you're comparing it off of other airports.
Well, the 10% was, look at the last nine years, and it looked like we were lagging around 10, 15% actually, say, behind.
But in every single category of rental?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Hangars at $280 a month for a standard hangar, approximately 500, excuse me, for a medium hangar right now, 526. And for a large hangar, 11, $1,100 going up to 1,200 and change is a bargain.
Okay. But this is a county airport. I mean, this is our airport. This isn't, we're not private industry looking to make a profit. I mean, that shouldn't be our goal. Number one goal is profit. We should be, we're providing a service to the public, so that's what I want to be careful of.
Yes. We also have some new equipment there. Like I said, we have new PAPs on precision approach path indicators that we had to pay for to put in. Our maintenance level on the, on the, all of the new surfaces, which we have a new apron, new runways, all that is, has increased. Now with the landing lights alone, the landing lights that, on the new runway, 1432, our primary runway, each one of those landing lights is about $400. And there's many of them that go up and down. So when one gets hit or gets taken out, it's going to cost us quite a bit to, to repair it. It's not the old days where it's a light bulb that's put in there. So our maintenance costs are, are, although we have put that into our, into our estimates as we're building these, I think it's going to cost us quite a bit.
I don't know who had their light on first, Commissioner Tavaia or Commissioner Pritchett, because I don't think we cleared it last time.
I think I was new.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett?
This is an enterprise fund. I know we say we're not trying to make a profit, but here's my concern, is we just went through this with the golf courses, and we didn't talk about it a lot till they started losing money. And I almost don't know that the government should be in the, the air hangar business, because I think we're in competition again with the private market. And I almost don't know if it's fair that we're running it so far below that we're giving the private market a problem with, with trying to charge fees that are competitive, because we're coming in under. And I, so I, I really struggle with this whole thing anyway. And I guess that'll be a, a future conversation. But I don't know that we shouldn't maybe stay on the competitive side of it. Maybe we should have a discussion later. Maybe we should do something different with the airport. But I, I think we should go ahead and at least try to stay competitive with fees, because if you own an aircraft, you're, you're not, you're not having a hard time with funds typically. So I think we need to cover our cost for sure and maybe work on building up our product. So maybe later, if we want to sell that, to get some money into our general fund, that would be a good idea. I don't think airports are going to go out of business like golf courses, but I, I have, this is just like a tough one for me anyways. So I'm probably going to vote in favor of your recommendation, but I think this might be something for a future discussion for us, so.
Commissioner Tavaia, I cleared your light. And then Commissioner Smith?
Thank, thank you. Mr. Borowski, you said we have 24 under construction, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
When do you expect those to be done?
March.
Okay. I'm going to do some quick math here. That's new revenue. Is that not new revenue?
That would be new revenue, yes.
Okay, $286 a pop on average, right?
Yes, sir.
Times 24, that is approximately $82,000 of new revenue.
Then you have to take out the debt service after that.
The debt service?
Yes.
This is new debt service?[1775.53]
That's correct, $1.2 million worth.
Yeah, but what's the, sorry, what's the annual debt service?
I, I think the annual debt service prior to the terminal and the new set of hangars that are being built, okay, is around $60,000. My new debt service is going to be about $110,000 per year.
So, so it's a $110,000 increase? I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. A 40 to $50,000 increase.
But, okay, so a 40 to $50,000 increase in debt service
In debt service.
And an $80,000 in, in income increase, correct?
Yes, sir, approximately.
Okay, I'm doing the math. That's more than what you had last year. Am I incorrect?
Well
If you have $80,000 more money coming in, $82,000 more money coming in, and $40,000 going out, does that make up for that $30,000 lack of increase? Am I missing something here?
Yeah, it's $50,000. So if you had the $80,000 and you minus the $50,000, you'd have a $30,000 revenue increase.
Which covers the difference between the CPI and the 10%. Am I correct? 38,000 minus 8,000 is $30,000.
$30,000, yes.
So why would you have any trouble paying for something if you have the exact same amount of revenue coming in?
Well, what comes along with the extra hangars too is extra expenses. Now that we go to over, we have 120 aircraft there, we're going to have more aircraft now, and they're going to have more people running over the lights, running over the, the regulatory information signs. We'll have more people each time someone climbs up and says, you know, my hangar door doesn't work, would you please fix it? And there's a few thousand dollars there.
Will, will there be more, will there be more folks buying fuel at 50 cents
Sure there will.
An extra gallon?
Sure there will.
So there will be more revenue with that as well?
But when you look at the revenue that we have with fuel, we do approximately $300,000 a year in fuel, which we make net, net, net somewhere around $25, $30,000 on the fuel. You don't make profit on the fuel, there's not that much there. It really, the, for the airport, it's the hangars that make you profit or revenue exceed Additionally, I might add that the airport was run for a long time by one person. It's way beyond that now. And so we now have another assistant, Mr. Borowski sits here as a full-time assistant. And we'll be getting, we have a volunteer right now, a full-time volunteer that's going to become a full-time administrative person there. We're maxed out. So there is additional cost. The airport is not the 25 to 30 aircraft, 40 aircraft that it was in the years. It's a lot now, it's a lot to take care of it. There's 600 and something odd acres there that we take care of. Just in the last two weeks, my tractor's broken twice, the transmission went out, a $6,000 expense, and then the, and the bush hog has gone bad. I just got the bill today, $3,900 for, to fix the bush hog. So expenses go up. When you have new navigational equipment that's out there in the field, you have to take care of it. Someone's got to weed eat it, someone's got to mow it, it has to take place.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Commissioner Pritchett brought up a good point with regard to golf courses, because I had thought of that also. We just finished a, a long period where we own golf courses and they cost us a lot of money. And we subsidized all those losses. You folks were the ones that paid for those losses. We are finally out of the golf course business. I'm not sure that we should be in the airport business. But I certainly don't think being in the airport business should burden you folks with subsidized losses. I don't want to see the airport lose money. I think if we're arguing over a few pennies here and there, and, and in this instance, $10,000, $30,000, I think it's a wise move from a business perspective for us to make sure that we're not costing our taxpayers money because some unforeseen instance or came, came upon the airport that was going to cost us money. So I don't think these are outrageous numbers, and I would be in favor of supporting this mo, this item.
Mr. Abate, you had your light on?
I know, I was just going to add on to the discussion some of the things. For example, when we did the additional hangars, there's the cost associated, the electric, you mentioned nine electrical bills, that's going to be going up. We also have to pay for the additional insurance. And those are relatively minor, but they were some additional items. I was just going to mention that during the discussion that was going on.
I'd like to bring one other point up. If you recall, when we had the golf course and the last people that were in there before they left, we got $85,000 a year, we get from the rent of the golf course, 200 acres. And when the other individuals were running it, we got an additional $33,000 a year. When we did our estimates with the terminal and the hangars and that, that additional $33,000 was there. It is not. Since the other golf course company left, we lost that $33,000 a year.
Commissioner Loeb?
A couple, a couple questions. First, with respect to the, the lights, and I'm just almost morbidly curious about this. I haven't flown a little aircraft in a long time, but when I did, I had insurance, more so to protect me from damaging someone else's property, whether it's another aircraft, rented owned, what have you. And I was always under the assumption that if I hit something and my insurance didn't cover it, that I would have to eat that cost. And I would, I would venture to guess that most folks that either rent aircraft, as I've done, or own aircraft, have at least the basic financial means to be able to pay for a $400 light. I, I don't doubt that they're expensive. But is there some reason that any damage that's, that's being caused by someone who's using the facility isn't being transferred and paid back by those individuals?
Sure, absolutely. How do you know who hit the light?
Simple answer, okay. See, I knew there had to be something. All right. And then only other question, because I, I hear it both sides, and I think, you know, both sides certainly have some merit. My inclination would be to support basically splitting the difference between what's been proposed on both sides. And I'll, I'll tell you, in order to try to force people toward the center, I'm going to vote no regardless, unless we meet in the middle.
I guess that just leaves me, right, to speak on this issue. I understand why you're asking for the larger increase, but at the same time, again, I'm sort of where you are as far as hearing both sides having merit. I, I like CPI. You know, it's a cost of living, it's, it's sort of what everybody else in the real world lives by. However, you know, I understand that, you know, having an aircraft or, or being able to afford to have flying lessons is a privilege and not everybody, not your average middle-class person probably does that. I know, I understand that. But I don't want anybody punished because they've had successes in life either. We've obviously saw where we expanded as, as a benefit to the county or we wouldn't have expanded. So I, I'm curious to, you know, did we anticipate a commission, a future commission that would go ahead and approve this 10%? Or did we just expand because we know we can fill those hangars? Because I know we wouldn't take on, I know at least this county management wouldn't take on that kind of debt and that additional debt service if it wasn't a benefit to the airport. So
Hey, I can address that. That, the debt service and that particular debt service can be paid as Steve's already mentioned. So it's really not just an issue of that. Honestly, and Steve hasn't even mentioned that, you know, we consolidated that just to lay everything out on the table. This doesn't have anything to do with the necessity of, of making those debt payments. He will be able to make them. That's when, when we planned that, we looked at that. And we looked at that not only as it would benefit his operation, but the overall county because, as you may recall, we refinanced and consolidated a number of debts and got a better shorter-term rate without increasing it. And we included his debt in that when we did that several months ago. The genesis of this in terms of, of the, the rate increases really came out of that audit that we asked for in June, when they really looked at where we were compared to all the other airports. So staff came up with what they did and the airport did it, trying to cover everything you've heard this evening, but it wasn't from a need to have to pay the debt as much as making sure they had a cushion for the expenses that as they continue to grow to a much, a significantly larger operation, that they'd be able to cover those expenses. And, and that's why it was proposed the way that it was. And it got through county management to, you know, to get forward to the board as it's been presented.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pritchett?
So, Mr. Abate, what you're saying is that part of this money that you're going to have extra coming in will be towards a reserve fund?
I don't know if I, I'd say it's a reserve fund. I would say that if, if the board doesn't approve this, it's, we will, we will be certain that the revenues that he's still able to collect from everything that's been discussed, from the additional hangars, from things like that, that we will not exceed, you know, expenses. So
Right.
The hope is that we would be able to do that. Of course, you'll always be able to do more. You know, some of the criticisms that we had, that we've received over the last six months, and some board members have heard some of these, had to do with, you know, mowing of the facilities, how quickly could we get it mowed when it was a certain height? And so his ability to do that with his existing staff, which is sitting here, which were actually doing some of the mowing sometimes, you know, we would be able to use road and bridge, et cetera. And so I think we would meet expenses and, yes, hopefully add to the reserve if the board chooses to approve either of the, the option as it was proposed or that middle ground.
Okay, I, I think I would probably be inclined to, to go with Mr. Loeb's recommendation if, if he makes that motion. But I really think, guys, that we really need to look at this because we are bringing this golf, I'm the golf course already, airport well under market. And it's just not right to business owners out there running the competitive market. We're really messing it up by having a government entity come in well below market because we can't. And, and we're not for profit, so, you know, it just, it just messes up the whole system. And I love the competitive market. And I just, I think we're in a place we shouldn't be. And that's why I think the rate increase we should do, I don't even know if it's enough. And I really think we got to get out of the airport business because I don't think government should be competing with the private sector. It's just my basic thought in my heart. So, Mr. Loeb, if you do that, I'll, I'll jump in with you. But I really think we need to get these up to competitive prices because it's just not fair out there to what we're doing to other business owners who are competing for the dollar.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I agree with you, Commissioner Pritchett. I, I don't think we should be in competition with private enterprise either. But right now, we're focused on the fact that we are. And as you mentioned, we have not had an increase since 2009. So my suggestion would be to accept these increases and impose a CPI going forward for each year. And so that way, we'll remain competitive with the other market and we won't be in danger of falling behind and being in a situation like we were with the golf courses. Because that really snuck up on us and, and it was hundreds of thousands of dollars that all of a sudden we were responsible for. So I think it would be a good idea to, to factor in that we haven't had an increase since '09. And if we want to do CPI, which I like also, do it from this point forward.
Commissioner Loeb?
Mr. Abate, could you help me out with this? If I wanted to take essentially what Mr. Tavaa proposed and what was proposed on the actual text in the agenda packet and split the difference of the two, what would the cleanest way in your estimation be to phrase that for purposes of a motion?
Actually, I believe Mr. Denninghoff has already calculated what those rates were. So we can give them to you right now.
I know, you're all surprised.
It's coming for you, John.
The large hangar, I'm just going to go down Exhibit A, the, the first page of Exhibit A, and it would be reflected in the RCAF, which is one of the other exhibits. Starting with the large hangar, the rate would change to $1,166.84. The medium hangar would change to $552.97. And the standard T-hanger would change to $276.48. And the half-T-hanger would be $138.24.
Yeah, I'd move to approve it with, with those prices reflected in lieu of what's indicated in the actual face of the text.
I think we have a motion on the floor, Mr. Tavaa.
I apologize.
You made a motion before, correct?
Yeah, and I, I'm not hearing a second on this one, so
I mean, I, I, I'm really torn on this, but I don't think that we would have the votes anyway to move forward.
I, I'm not torn against raising, raising fees above CPI. I, I think this is, you know
No, I'm torn, I'm torn on the argument, I'm torn on the discussion only because I, I get you don't want to compete with, with private business, but I don't see one next door. And, and this is what we've agreed upon, and CPI seems like the reasonable, but I don't believe that we have the support of three votes, so
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to pull it out and, and I think that, you know, there's another motion that may have a second and probably have three votes. I will not be on the side of increasing fees above CPI, but I certainly don't think there's the will to, to, to keep them at that CPI. So I, I'd like to pull my motion, Madam Chair.
All right, Mr. Loeb?
I'd like to proceed with the motion as, as previously stated. So to use the values that Mr. Denninghoff just stated for us in place of those that are apparent on Exhibit A, but otherwise to approve it as is.
I'll second that motion. I think it's a wise, wise move to split the baby.
Thank you.
Okay, see, no more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. All right, we have a time certen at 6:30. I'm not sure
Madam Chair, just, you guys approved the rates, did you also approve the documents? Just making sure that was on the record, that was approval of the documents. Thank you.
Otherwise unaltered.
Sure.